Okay, I've got almost two hours of speaker slips. So, let's get to the speakers. I want everybody to have an opportunity to speak. If you haven't filled out a slip, please turn it in now. I'm gonna hold you to three minutes. If you can do it in one, great. Come up and say I'm in favor of one, two, or three. That'd be great. But if you need the full three, I'm gonna give you the three, but I'm gonna shut you off right at three minutes. Because I need to make it, make, and give everybody else an opportunity to speak. Now, the Bicycle Coalition has a film, or video they want to show, which is five minutes in length.
I'd like to forego showing that film.
You wanna forego it? Okay. Now, does that mean that Nancy and Mark want to speak?
Mark who?
Mark Sap.
So, I think no.
Okay. All right, let's go. I'm gonna, we're gonna queue ya up by three. Come up, and we'll set the timer for three minutes. And please, if you can use less, use less. Ed France, Phil Yunander, Julia Croxton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, I'd like to thank Public Works staff for doing a whole lot of work in a very short amount of time. I love, the Bicycle Coalition, along with the Community Environmental Coalition, sorry, the Community Environmental Council, and COAST, Coalition for Sustainable Transportation, have endorsed the two-lane alternative, as we see as the most favorable solution for the businesses and residents of Old Town, and for transportation in general. Not only is that part of surveying businesses and interacting with residents, but also our own very careful looks at the draft Kittleson and Associates' two-lane study, call into question some of the most significant of traffic impacts, the kind of, the caramageddon, if you will, of, you know, intersection failures and reduction in level of service at intersections. Specifically, Equil Fowler, as Mr. Wagner mentioned, Equil Fowler is an attempt to add grid alternatives, to take traffic off of Hollister, specifically to reduce congestion off of that Old Town Hollister. And Equil Fowler, unfortunately, is gonna have to route through Hollister to Kellogg because we didn't get the route right from 217, because UCSB fought us, right? Although, maybe we could fight again. But, um, that project could allow for a two-lane. But when you really look at the draft, which it is still a draft study, as far as I understand, it's very, there's never a drawing of where the two lanes starts and stops exactly. There's no schematic, right? It just kind of starts with that assumption. But unfortunately, that assumption does not dovetail with the Equil Fowler. I've been checking in with Rosemary Gaglione until she's tired of hearing from me emails and calls, but there are challenges, certainly, with driveways and with crosswalks. But, there is bike lanes past Kellogg, past Kinman, all the way to the Wendy's drive-thru. Yet, the two-lane in the study that creates all this traffic impact overlaps with where all the Equil Fowler traffic is being diverted down to Kellogg. In other words, it goes east of Kellogg. So, these projects don't complement, they conflict. Because we were all looking at these numbers, and thinking, "Well, this makes sense compared to other cities." How come the traffic impacts are so significant? And I would have to say, for the draft study, I need to call into question these kind of car apocalypse traffic impacts. And we believe, perhaps upon further review, that the mitigation will be far less significant than initially projected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. France. Phil Yunander, Julia Croxton, Phoebe Mansur.
I'm taking all three minutes. No more. My name is Phil Yunander, and I am a business owner in Old Town. My business is Larry's Auto Parts, located on the south side of Hollister and Magnolia. I'm gonna read this as fast as I can. "I am against the plan that would eliminate parking on the south side of Hollister to make room for a wider bike lane. A few weeks ago, I received a white paper, which is a nineteen-page paper, but out by the city of Glinda, as a report of the status of the Hollister redesign project and the proposed bike lane modifications. The paper takes note of what the city would like Hollister to look like, as Mr. Wagner so eloquently told us. And then, there's an admission that since you can't fit a hundred-and-eighteen-foot street into a ninety-foot space, you're twenty-eight feet short, right, Steve? It's not gonna work. So, let's consider alternatives. And as Steve pointed out, the alternatives are one-way traffic lane each way, keeping a center-turn lane, keeping the parking, and adding a bike lane; two lanes each way, no center-turn lane, keeping the parking, keeping the bike lane; the third alternative, which I'm here to be against tonight, is two lanes each way, retaining the center-turn lane, bike lane, and reduce parking on the south side; the fourth alternative, nobody talked about, is leave it alone."
Yeah.
Quiet. I have, my three minutes is going down. "The report concludes that options one and two are not feasible, and option three is the best because it's the easiest and the cheapest to implement. The report also shares a parking study done a few years ago that talks about the total number of available spaces in Old Town being seventeen-hundred-and-something. That seemed to vary a few times. And the twenty-seven spaces for the proposal nomination is only 1.7 percent of the total. The company that did this survey concluded that there were so little turnovers based on Hollister, losing, these would be a minimal impact. I submit to the council, 1,168 signatures taken in the last ten days from people that disagree with this finding. These signatures were obtained from customers of the businesses around me. Ninety-nine percent of our customers agreed, and their responses were a mixture of surprise and outrage, saying a lot of words that I'm not allowed to talk tonight. These people use the spots on Hollister. The spots with little or no turnover are on the side streets. And I disagree with their finding that the side streets, they say the side streets, you call them available parking, Steve? Is that what you use the term? That's what they said, available parking? No, they're not available. Look at the side streets. Look out my front window. They park all day long on the side streets. Those are the people that park there. Spots with little or no turnover are there. The biggest customer complaint for me is lack of parking. And this is, I have a parking lot behind me. I have a small lot that I share with four businesses around me, not the massage parlor, okay? For some, street parking is closer to 100 percent of their available parking, not 1.7 percent. 1.7 is, I don't know where they came up with that number. The numbers match, but it's not a realistic thing. You were saying that people that park on Hollister park there all day long? Sit in front of my store. Look out my front window. I see both sides of my street. Those cars are in and out all day long, visiting all these businesses. So, I support the goal of the bicycle safety when it is feasible to achieve. The plan to eliminate parking, to me, is just not feasible."
Thank you. Julia Croxton, Phoebe Mansur, David Fainer.
Hi, I'm Julia Croxton, and I own the Goodland Market in Old Town, and I'm Phil's next-door neighbor, down the street. As a business owner in the neighborhood, I'm really interested in getting more people to intentionally stop in Old Town, and leave their money there. And, as a member of the community, I want that to happen in a careful, organic way, to result in a vibrant, multi-level civic commercial zone. It's gotta happen organically, sort of thing. And by taking all of the parking out of any one area, whether it's the north side, the south side, the side streets, or whatever, that puts an undue strain on any particular group of businesses. It's not effective. It'll just cause all their parking to go to the side, and it will create, we will still have the same thoroughfare attitude about going through Golida. Right now, people use Golida so they don't have to get on the freeway. You know, for one reason or another, people drive through Golida, they don't come to Golida. And if we slow the traffic down, and we do that, and by making it more available for bicyclists, parking, and slow that traffic down, and eliminating those people, keeping them on the freeway, putting them on Cali Real, the neighborhood will have a chance to grow, instead of just getting whizzed by constantly like it does. I'm in favor of the two-lane alternative. I'm absolutely against the elimination of parking at any particular area. You gotta have parking. People jump in and out. In my café, our average sit-down time is thirty-eight minutes. I bet at Phil's, it's fifteen minutes. People in and out, and it's important that they get in and out. And that's what, the mitigation for that is gonna be, I hate to say it, parking meters, or parking enforcement of some sort. That's the mitigation that will work in Old Town, is to keep cars moving. Those of us who have employees, it will cause our employees to park a little farther away and have to walk. So what, sort of thing. That will happen. So, I really, really endorse this two-lane, and I really, really will work hard against eliminating parking. Thanks.
Thank you. Phoebe Mansur, David Fainer, Ken Knight.
Mayor, Councilmember, staff, audience, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Phoebe Mansur. I am a local resident of Old Town, a business owner. And I wanted to thank Steve and Rosemary for the report that they put together. It was very comprehensive. Parking as a business owner, parking is important to me. Large trees, large trees are part of Golida's heritage. And Old Town has three large trees of significance. The Australian willow, the witness tree is an historic tree, the sister witness tree is a national champion of its species. In all the diagrams that we have in the packet, feature trees. But I didn't find any mention in the description about how you were incorporating the trees in the plan. And I'm gonna read a little bit. "As a resident, trees and green spaces give us more sense of comfort. They provide a range of values that we can measure. It's, uh, gives us a sense of ambiance, comfort. Now, as a merchant, this is kind of sexy for you merchants out there. They increase the value of your business and your revenue stream. Businesses on treescape streets show 20 percent higher income stream, which is essential, competitive edge needed for Main Street store success versus competition from Plaza Discount Stores." The second item is, trees bring in more customers that are willing to pay more money, a higher fee, 20 percent higher. They come more often, they stay longer. They also inherently have a sense that your product is better by having trees on your street. So, if you haven't gotten the idea yet, I think tree, incorporating trees into this plan is really important. I would like to ask you to please include that when you're going forward in your design, also keeping the street parking. And my suggestion for the traffic flow, following along with Mr. Bennett's idea, is remove the roundabouts, 217, and put one large roundabout in the center of 217. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Fainer, Ken Knight, Tim Stillinger.
Good evening, Mayor Sevis, and members of the City Council. My name's David Fainer. For a little while longer, I am president of Glinda Valley Beautiful. To begin with, I actually want to express my sympathy both to the council and the staff for how difficult and complex this issue is. I know you signed up for it, but even so, I, I really think it's difficult. Councilmember Easton talked about all the things going on in Old Town Golida, and along the Hollister corridor. He cited cars, buses, bikes, pedestrians, and parking. There's one thing, and this isn't a criticism of your comments, I agree that's exactly what's going on. There's one thing that's not going on in Old Town Golida, and that's trees. It's an important element for the revitalization of Old Town. Your urban forest management plan states that effective pre-planning processes should be enforced so that the value of large trees can be maintained within business districts despite ongoing or future city projects that would otherwise force the removal of trees. Right now, in Old Town, there are essentially no trees along Hollister Avenue. By accommodating the needs of trees during the pre-planning process, opportunity for providing large shade trees at lower costs can be increased, especially in redeveloping business districts, which is, of course, Old Town. One of the recommendations is to accommodate trees during early infrastructure design of city projects. Well, that means providing enough space for the right kind of trees. If you want a tree that looks like those in the diagrams, you have to recognize that it's got a certain girth. You have to space it. So, let me jump forward, maybe you can give me an extra minute, but...
No, you got three. Please continue.
Okay. So, the, including trees can be a really unifying factor in your, in your Old Town design. I've given you a picture of my street. This is Camino Campania, just outside City of Golida limits. There, I took this picture, these two pictures, about twenty feet apart. I, I walked out of a shadow, but on one picture, this is the same neighborhood, same streets, same kind of houses, you see the same kind of cars on each side of the street. And the difference between those two pictures is street trees. And that's the difference, that's the choice that you have for Old Town in the, in the Hollister corridor. Please start now to include planning for trees, and I'll stop at the button. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fainer. Ken Knight, Tim Stillinger, Mark Moray. And I'm sorry, I gotta keep you to three, or we're not, or we're gonna be here until tomorrow.
Hi, my name's Ken Knight. I'm a executive director of Glinda Valley Beautiful, and a certified municipal specialist arborist. Can we get one of the four-lane design plans shown up on there, on the screen? Any one of the alternatives? We like the idea of what's shown here, and all the alternatives is including trees, as you notice, that's my thought, too. But one of the things that you're probably wrestling with is, how are we gonna fit 'em in? Because for the last twenty years, Golida Valley Beautiful's been trying to plant trees in Old Town Golida, and we said, "Well, there's not enough room." Well, how do we do it? Well, even with the existing, well, not the two-lane, give me a four-lane alternative. With the four-lane alternative, it's all done on the existing sidewalk. The way it's shown here, if you try and put the trees in after the fact, it's not gonna work. There's not enough room. But, there are other ways to do it beforehand, if you're doing planning beforehand. There's something called a silva cell. What it is, think of it like a really strong box. And you put a lot of these boxes together, you can put 'em underneath the sidewalk, put 'em underneath the street, as you're reconstructing the street, and you can have enough room, not only for the tree roots, but also for the utility lines that are running underneath the street. Also, for, it's, it's an excellent stormwater management item, because what you can do is trap water and let it evaporate there. So, these silva cells are used for, for a multitude of purposes, not only for trees, but also for stormwater management. They are a very valuable tool. It's something that we had some money for a few years back. We tried to do it, but it got too expensive with the reconstruction of the pavement. So, it's one of the things that I would suggest, if you can get your contract city arborist involved in the pre-planning at this stage of the game, this is a time to take a look at it. Because those trees there, for example, are gonna be about thirty, forty feet tall. And they, they have to be trimmed up fourteen feet in order to handle truck traffic underneath. Well, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna need some larger trees. You're not gonna be able to plant small trees. Storefront owners are gonna wanna make sure that their signs are visible underneath. So, you're gonna have to have some larger trees, and these, there are ways to plan for that. We thank you, and hope that, best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago. Well, let's work on it now. Thank you.
Tim Stillinger, Mark Moray, Jen Stroh.
Hi, City Council. My name's Tim Stillinger, and I'm here today to speak as a UCSB graduate student, who uses Hollister Road on my way to and from UCSB. So, I commute to UCSB by either car, scooter, or bicycle. And no matter what mode of transport I decide on, when I pass through Old Clown de Lida, I don't feel safe due to the current road design. When I'm driving, I feel that there's not adequate options for bikes and pedestrians to use the space without conflicting in my driving space. I have to, I've had to swerve to avoid bicyclists. Sometimes, I'm forced to quickly move lanes, and I've had to brake really hard and fast for pedestrians that aren't using the crosswalk. The current design of the road creates situations that place bikes and pedestrians into situations where, as a driver, I seriously feel like I may hit someone. I don't want that to happen. I want to drive on a road that gives every user separate space, and eliminates these conflicts, so I can drive through Old Town Golida, and not worry about conflicts with bikers and pedestrians. When I'm biking to school, I feel even less safe, because I feel like a victim to the same issues that I feel when I'm driving. Instead, now I feel like the current roadway design is forcing me, as a biker, into unsafe situations, and to rely on the courtesy of the drivers for my safety. I honestly feel like I could die or become seriously injured while biking on this stretch of road. The cars move really fast, and in some spots, there's no separation between the cars and the bikes. And at times, I really feel like my safety is being compromised, more so than the other road users. I have many friends who try to avoid this section of road, or tell me that unsafe biking conditions on Hollister is the reason that they don't bike to school. It only takes a really short, scary section of road to make someone can decide to not bike at all to school, and instead hop in their car and drive, which just creates more congestion. Instead, I'd want my commute to be safe by design. I would greatly prefer to feel safe along Hollister Avenue by design in Old Town Golida. I urge you to review the issues, and look not only from a view of traffic counts and second spin at intersections, but instead, look, take it a holistic view, and look at the safety of everyone in the community, by creating the spaces that are safe for everyone to use. There's a lot more at stake here than how efficiently you can move cars through a section of road. It's also about community safety, and creating a safe and prosperous Golida. I endorse the two-lane alternative, but more so than a specific alternative, I like to see, look at ways to better separate cars and bicyclists, like adding buffered bike lanes or cycle tracks, and use multimodal modeling to really understand how the type of bike lane really can affect the perceived, and the perceived safety of the users, can really affect the use of those facilities. And that could really affect the cycling rates in Old Town. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark Moray, Jen Stroh, Linda Hill.
Thank you. My name's Mark Moray, and I appreciate that the City Council is entertaining the idea of a real bike lane down Hollister. The days of car culture, cheap gas, strip malls, urban sprawl were cool in the seventies, but now some progressive urban planning is long overdue. Unfortunately, I bought a house close to work, so I could bike, but it's in No Lida, instead of North Golida, because I'm tired of people trying to kill me with their cars. And so, I support a road diet of some sort for Hollister. I've seen some pretty good alternatives out here, the two-lanes, to facilitate real bike lanes. Either two lanes of traffic, or maybe eliminate some parking on the south side, either way. But I really like the idea of outdoor cafés. So, stripe it, and the people will ride. Thank you.
Jen Stroh.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for hearing us out. My name is Jennifer Stroh, and I am here on behalf of COAST, Safe Routes for Seniors. I do the community outreach and organize community walks. We had just over twenty people attend our walk through Old Town on July 31st. Thank you, Councilmember Easton and Bennett, and Ms. Gaglione, for attending. What I'm finding from working with a number of seniors is, the situation there needs to improve. Unfortunately, no one's gonna get everything that they want. But right now, it's unsafe, and we'd like to see improvements as far as accessibility and safety for pedestrian use. We support the two-lane alternative, and I just really appreciate the work that you're doing, and I know that it's a difficult situation, but I hope that we can make something happen working together, and something in a timely fashion, the two-lane alternative. Thanks.
Thank you. Linda Hill, Linda La Fuente, Mark McLennethen.
Good evening. I'm speaking for the senior population, and just reiterating that the fear that's involved with biking, or trying to cross the street in downtown Golida. I'm a big supporter of Old Town Golida. I would love, I invite my friends to have lunch with me there. I like bringing my friends there. I'd like to see it a more welcoming place, and a safer place to stroll around in. I would also like to just throw in the idea that we could be a little bit more forward-looking in our study. I'm pessimistic kind of person, but I believe that in the future, there will be smaller cars, fewer cars, reduced car emissions, more public transportation, car sharing, and I'd like to see that taken into consideration, instead of just depending on the, what's been going on now. We can't continue that way on this precious, precious planet of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda La Fuente, Mark McLennethen, and Quentin G. Is Linda here?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Linda La Fuente, and, Councilmembers, my concern in Old Town, the bicycles and skateboards, I've been hurt because of this. And, right by my house, off of Orange Avenue, and I've been there two years, and even before I got hurt, I see this every day, even when I was working. The crosswalks are dangerous. The people that are in cars have more control over the streets than they do pedestrians. I've seen them just go right through the red light. And I know the budgets, you know, I guess, the camera thing isn't, I don't know if that's allowed, or how all that, you know, kinda stuff works, but the skateboards, bicycles, and like I say, they don't pay attention. A coworker got hit, knocked over by Santa Cruz Market. He was trying to cross to get 7-Eleven to come to work, and she's on her cellphone, talking on the phone. And I mean, I know the officer just can't be there 24/7. I mean, it's just, but yeah, so the pedestrian walkways through there are very dangerous. And I've seen people just, they don't pay attention. But the skateboards, for me, and the, and I don't know how, it's all, this is all gonna work out for you guys, or for the city, I should say. But yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned, because I've been hurt and hospitalized because of, like I said, I got three bicycles and a skateboard, you know, coming at me. And I, if they're not there on the sidewalks, there is room on the sidewalks there in, in Old Town. So, when I had to go step to the left, well, my foot slipped off. I didn't fall on the ground. And I'm telling them, you know, "Get off the bikes." You know, "Walk the bike." But that's all I wanted to, you know, my concern is, and this is every day, every day, every day. This bicycle and skateboard thing has gotten bad, oh. But anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Be careful.
No, I'll be very careful.
Mark McLennethen, Quentin G., Robert Bernstein.
Mayor and Council, my name is Mark McLennethen. I'm both a motorist and a bike rider in the Old Town area. I work at ATK Space Systems on Pine Avenue. So, I bike to work about once a week, and so I'm very familiar with the area and the challenges that are present. I actually think the present condition actually works pretty darn well for the small road that we have, and all the traffic, and everything that is going on. But I am against the reduced parking along the street. I think the parking is very important, and for all the businesses, I think it's unfair to eliminate the parking on one side and not the other. I liked what some of the future ideas were for trying to find parking elsewhere. I mean, there's businesses that have parking lots that don't, you know, really have that many people parking in them, maybe, you know, possibilities could happen there. If I had to pick one of the proposals, I would pick, let's say, removal of the center lane. And then, also, let's eliminate left, turning left at certain times during the day. It wouldn't be any different than going down Cabrillo Boulevard. When somebody wants to make a left, you have to stop behind them, or once the lane clears, you drive around. To be honest, you know, even the traffic lanes that have a left-hand turn there, gets maybe one car through a cycle. You have to, you know, get out into the intersection, and then, when it finally turns red, then you're, you have the ability to get cross-traffic. Traffic's bad, noon time or so, left-hand, left, turning left is almost impossible, anyway. Really, the only prob, well, besides that one, the only other problem I've really seen on Hollister is Friday traffic. You know, the Fairview intersection is, is crossed over there where the northbound traffic is getting off, is impacted, and it backs all the way up over and down Hollister. That's the day you like to be a bicycle rider. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Quentin G., Robert Bernstein, Kristen... Quentin G., Robert Bernstein, Kristen Kiefer.
Hi, my name's Quentin G. I'm a graduate student at UCSB and a resident in Galita. I just think it's really important to sort of, for me, as a, I'm a cyclist, I try to bike to school as much as I can. But I like the idea of feeling safe, and I don't know, I just don't feel safe biking along that street, along Hollister. And it just also seems to me, from a perspective of, like, I know a lot of business owners are here, I don't know, when I go downtown, and other downtown areas like Ventura or downtown Santa Barbara, these areas that just find ways to restrict a little bit of traffic flow, these road diets seem to me things that make the area seem much more welcoming, not only to bikers but for people that want to go and hang out in these areas. I know a lot of undergrads I talk with, they love the idea of going downtown to downtown Santa Barbara, but I've never heard any of them say, oh, I want to go to Old Town and hang out. But there's ways that we can do that. And I know that there's a lot of unique factors that make Galita, it's difficult. But I think that if we think really creatively and we try to, you know, set a goal that says we want to make this place better for cyclists, better for foot traffic, and for people to just treat it as if it's like this old-town place, I think that we could come up with something, I hope. So I generally like the idea of a two-lane setup, and I think we could find a way around it.
Thank you. Robert Bernstein, Kristen Kiefer, and Paul Avilo.
Hi, I'm Robert Bernstein. I've lived in Galita for 31 years, representing the Sierra Club tonight. For the whole 31 years that I've been here, we've had bicycle lanes promised, and we really almost got it 18 years ago with the Old Town Galita revitalization plan that Michael Bennett was talking about. We did all of these studies. There's nothing new in the current parking study that wasn't in that study, and as you pointed out, we had alternate routes and everything all worked out. We're not talking about eliminating any parking. We're talking about moving parking of short distance. This isn't really a matter of, like, taking a vote and having a petition or something because we don't do that about matters of civil rights, and that's what this is. I mean, we're talking about three people who have died on bikes or as pedestrians and hundreds of people who have been seriously injured. You don't take a poll on things like that. You fix the problem, and it is a matter of priorities. And with all due respect to how difficult this is, it's our turn, meaning it's the turn for the environment and for pedestrians and cyclists to have those lanes, and you can figure out the rest of it later. We're not taking a position about the two lanes versus four lanes, reduced parking or anything. I know most of my friends here are supporting the two-lane option. Personally, I'm pushing for whatever it is that gets safe bike lanes as quickly as possible after 31 years that I've been waiting. And to me, that sort of no-brainer is what Ed Easton has basically indicated as the no-brainer, which is you move those 27 spaces, which represents 1.7% of the spaces, and you're done. And then you can figure out the longer-term plans later, but that's sort of the no-brainer quick solution. By the way, business, as has been pointed out many times, profits by people not parking in front of their space. Business profits by people walking and saying, hey, yeah, let's go to Galita, let's hang out, let's go to Old Town. And point out also that one-third of Americans don't drive, and in Old Town Galita, it's a higher percentage than that. And if you look at the space allocation, I think it should probably be commensurate with those numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristen Kiefer, Paul Avilo, Robert Stigmeyer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Kristen Kiefer, and I've grown up in Galita. I am currently speaking on behalf of the Master's in City and Regional Planning Program at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. I was part of one of the teams that wrote a vision plan for the city of Galita, and I'm very, very excited that these plans are really being considered and put into practice. As part of our plans, we really put forth an effort to connect with the community and made that our first priority. In speaking with the community, we were really able to get an idea of what's going on here and, you know, who's using what and in what ways it can be made better. We performed two formal community meetings in which we invited business owners, community members, pretty much anyone we could get, you know, access to, to come to our meetings and speak about what made Galita such a unique place to live. Growing up here, I was overwhelmed to be, you know, overwhelmed with joy to be part of this studio course, and we broke off into three teams and wrote three different vision plans for the city of Galita where we looked forward to the future of, you know, what the next 30 years could look like. And all three of our plans did look to a two-lane reduction plan. And so tonight, I am speaking to support the two-lane alternative. All of our plans did include a two-lane alternative where we put the pedestrian and bicyclist safety as one of our number-one priorities. This came up again and again in every interaction that we had with public, when we had our community meetings with them, and then when we went out and spoke on Hollister Avenue, we would, you know, start up conversations with people in the street, pretty much anyone that we could find on our weekend visits. And this opportunity has been so amazing for me to realize the potential of this area. And I became impassioned about planning, and when I found out that I could be in a studio class that would help the community that I grew up in, I jumped on board. Speaking about the parking study that was completed a couple of years ago in 2011, we really found that a lot of our findings to be very similar with there being a concern for parking for business owners, but the lack of changeover on the street really does become a detriment to those business owners. We firmly believe that slowing down traffic and making a more pedestrian-friendly area can only improve the business owners' opportunities and chances in this area. I'm so pleased to see tonight so many of the faces that showed up at our community meetings and helped us along our way in writing our vision plans. So again, thank you for letting us work with you, and I hope that this is really going to be a great thing.
Thank you. Paul Avilo, Robert Stigmeyer, Ben Werner.
Thank you. My name is Paul Avilo, and I'm a business owner in Old Town Galita, and I live in Galita. My biggest concerns are safety and traffic flow through the Hollister corridor as it is the only southbound, you know, artery south of the 101. If there is a disaster, if there is an earthquake or something like that, it becomes the only corridor through there. So thinking about how much traffic can go through there is something that I hope you guys all take to heart. And parking is a huge deal. I understand the traffic, the parking study they did, but go out there, look at it, look at all the cars that are out there, go to the side streets, they're packed, especially on the north side. They're dangerously packed behind the businesses and up along the side streets and back. So looking at parking first and foremost, you know, almost before anything else, would be my recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Stigmeyer, Ben Werner, Eva Inbar.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Robert Stigmeyer. I've lived in Galita for 13 years since the year 2000, and I just wanted to say, I ride a bicycle almost every day. I have cars. And what I wanted to make a reflection is that in the past 13 years, it's been a struggle to use a bicycle versus an automobile for the purpose of environmental issues. I think that, given the present situation, that it would probably be better, based on the economic adversity that most business owners are experiencing in the current time, probably would be a good idea until you're very well-prepared to do any serious changes. Removing the south-side parking spaces is going to make a serious problem for those people that own businesses on that side of the street, based on human nature, to be able to get in and out for the purpose of their economic stability. I think that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Ben Werner, Eva Inbar, and Greg Janey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I think most of you know, I'm involved in this pop-up patio project that came out of the Love of Galita event earlier this year. And the pop-up patio project is, can be viewed as an experiment in seeing what happens when we convert some on-street parking to public gathering space. Does that, in fact, benefit the business, and how does that affect the character and experience in Old Town in a small way? As an engineer, I know the value of theoretical models, but I also know that it's in real-world experiments that the real learning happens. So what I'd like to propose is a two-lane Hollister for a week experiment. This could be done without restructuring. This could be done with cones and other means that we have at our disposal. And this is something I imagine would come after a significant envisioning period, including public works and the public. It could include, for example, large potted trees. If you imagine or consider how quickly public space can be transformed for an event like Earth Day, for example, you can appreciate that if we were to envision and create a number of other things happening along Hollister, this wouldn't necessarily be a financial burden on the city, but would really be based on the volunteer potential of the community and the incentive of the community, very much like what's happening with the pop-up patio project. So if this were to be, if this experiment were to be initiated, I would certainly be one of, I think, many enthusiastic participants in the experiment, both in the envisioning process and in actually carrying it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva Inbar, Greg Janey, Linda Foster.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Eva Inbar, Board Member with Coast. Our Coast has endorsed the two-lane option. It has the most benefits for, in a lot of ways, safety being one of them, for both bicyclists and pedestrians. Two-lane streets are much, much safer than four-lane streets, and it has benefits for the economy of Old Town, and that needs some help. We want it to thrive, right? And the two-lane option would free up enough space to put in trees, which people want, to add parking, not remove it, which businesses want, and to invite people to stay and linger and not whiz by, which is also something that your businesses want. So there's a lot of benefits, I think, and that should really move us to direct staff to give us, you know, what would it take to make this happen? That should be our premise here. What would it take? Not all the reasons why it can't happen, why the sky would fall down and all of that. No, what would it take to make it happen? And engineers are very capable, and then they can do a lot. Studies are based on assumptions, and the current studies is based on some assumptions that make it very difficult and that are very alarmist and could scare anyone, even me. But I think those assumptions need to be examined, one assumption being the lane capacity that's set very, very low, below the industry standard, as was mentioned here, of 18,000. Milpas has an ADT of 18,000, and it has more intersections than Old Town. And where you start and end the road diet is also very important, and that's something that Franz pointed out. It makes no sense whatsoever to start it at Kellogg. You know, move it closer to the center of Old Town, to the heart of Old Town, at the community center, and then it will have a lot less traffic impact. So a lot of those doomsday scenarios that we've heard about may not come to happen. But ask your staff, what would it take? Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Janey, Linda Foster, Tim Burgess.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Greg Janey. I've been a resident of Galita Valley for over 20 years, and it seems that we have so many desires for Old Town. I mean, a way to drive to and through it, sure, but also sufficient parking, support for bicyclists, pedestrian and bicyclist safety, pedestrian convenience, attractiveness and livability, and a zone that promotes pedestrian-oriented retail businesses and economic vitality. So we have these many desires. It's clearly a multifaceted problem here, and there's no single design that's going to satisfy all of those goals, so some kind of compromise is needed. Unfortunately, what I've seen is that when thinking of a design, the conversation focuses on traffic flow. The traffic must flow unimpeded. And I think that explains why we have the Hollister we have today, where it's, you know, almost impossible to bicycle through it safely. You take your life in your hands if you try to cross the street as a pedestrian. Insufficient parking, but the traffic flows by golly. And I think it's also reflected in staff's report that we heard tonight, which focuses almost entirely on traffic flow, to the exclusion of almost everything else. I appreciate it's a preliminary report. But still, where's the analysis that shows, what are the benefits of increased walkability and bikeability in Old Town under the scenario of a two-lane option? What, you know, where's the analysis that shows that, excuse me, customers might be more tolerant of distant parking if the walking conditions are nicer in Old Town? It's actually something I thought of tonight, and so if you find that's true, you can credit me. But regarding the options presented tonight, I mean, I would favor any option that made it safer and easier for bicyclists. But I have to say that it's hard for me to imagine Old Town Galita being a real downtown if it has four traffic lanes plus a center lane, because there's just so much traffic. It's such a huge barrier between the two sides of the street. I don't want to think of Old Town as a highway with a couple of strip malls on each side. I don't think it's that. But it's clearly, it's not a downtown yet. So I'd ask the Council to please consider all the facets of the problem, look beyond the traffic flow. And also, please recognize that the design that maximizes traffic flow doesn't necessarily make for the best community. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Foster.